We are ready.
All right. All right. Good evening and welcome. I call to order the June 28, 2021 City Council Successor Agency to the redevelopment agency Housing Authority Regular Meeting. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda this evening?
Nothing from staff this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right, and I'm not seeing any hands up from council. Greg Rubin, City Attorney, is there a report from closed session?
There's no report from closed session tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to item five, Council Communications and Announcements. These are brief items from members of the City Council regarding upcoming events in the community and correspondence that they have received. They are informational in nature and no action will be taken on these items at this meeting. I see Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is actually a, I'd like to ask for a council communication. I'm wondering, given our last meeting and our votes about Laurel Street, if there's an update from the downtown Subcommittee about next steps or when that committee might be meeting.
Yeah, I think we've got a meeting scheduled coming up in early July.
Don't think it's scheduled yet, but I think staff was working on it.
Yeah, we were targeting, I think, early next week, first half of next week for a meeting if the Subcommittee is available or the first available date after that. We're putting together, we're having a big all-hand staff meeting this week in preparation of the Subcommittee meeting to help flush out a lot of the issues that the council talked about at their last meeting and some prior thoughts that the Subcommittee had shared with us so that we could start to craft a list of options, recognizing that it seemed like there was a desire on the part of the council to see, you know, some interim plan come forward fairly quickly. And I know some of the council members this week are meeting with merchants and business owners downtown. I'm meeting on Thursday, I think, with a group from the downtown, so we'll get some more feedback there, which I think will be helpful timing in advance of our next meeting. We will hope to get any items that, you know, the Subcommittee's recommending back to council on their next agenda, if time's permitting. If it's not permitting and, you know, the Subcommittee's in agreement and the changes make sense, I still have the emergency authorities that are granted under the current declaration of emergency so that I could put changes in place and then the council could choose to ratify or not that decision at the earliest available council meeting. So we have quite a few tools available to us to help with any anticipated changes to the current configuration or program of the downtown.
Great. Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Adam and Ron, for your continued work on this big topic. I too have been visiting with the business owners and I think there's a lot of interest among all of us to figure out next steps and how we can best support our downtown businesses. So really appreciate the update and the work. Thank you.
And I apologize. I was looking at another Subcommittee meeting that I just agreed to today and I was thinking that that Subcommittee meeting was the downtown Subcommittee. So too many Subcommittees.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any additional hands raised for reports from council. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make a public comment? This is for persons wishing to address the council and others not on the posted agenda may do so. Each speaker will be limited to two minutes. If the item you are speaking on is not listed on the agenda, please be advised that the city council may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed under the Brown Act. The city council's general policy is to refer items to the staff for attention or have a matter placed on future city council agenda for more comprehensive action or report informal public discussion and input at that time.
Yes, we do look like we have one hand at the moment. Debbie, you should be able to unmute yourself. There you go.
Good evening, council, and I would just like to say thank you very much for listening to the community about the concerns about storm drains. We do feel like you have heard us. We thank Steve Machida, the staff, city council, and all the members of the staff who've worked behind the scene to put items in the budget tonight to improve the storm drain infrastructure, especially as it relates to COVID's creek. So thank you very much from me and from many, many of my neighbors who feel recognized and appreciated and your commitment to the environment as it relates to storm drains. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie. I do not see any further of the hands.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item is the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight I wish to pull item K, the resolution on Cherry Street Commons, please.
Okay, anybody else have any other items to pull? All right, I don't, I don't see any additional requests. So Sarah, or I'm sorry, Vice Mayor McDowell, if your item is fairly quick, do you want to proceed?
Sure. I just wanted to ask staff for a very brief presentation on this project. I think that affordable housing is so important to our council and we're dedicating time and a significant amount of resources to this project. I just think it's really important to keep the community informed on how it's going. So I see that Adam Aronson is joining us, so I'll let him take it away.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McDowell. Yes, I'm Adam Aronson. I'm the city's Economic Development Housing Manager. I'm happy to give an overview of this project. So it is a 100% affordable housing project, 1232 to 1244 Cherry Street. It is a partnership with the City of San Carlos Hip Housing and Eden Housing, and it is a workforce and family-oriented housing project. So that means there's a variety of unit types that will be in the project, and it's ideally located near downtown, has access to transit, schools, the library, shopping, and parks. Crystal, do you mind advancing the slides for me? Thank you. So on the left here, you'll see an overview of the area, and the red outline is the properties in question. Now on the right is the site in question, so that red dotted outline shows where the actual development will take place. And it will result in the alley being relocated to more aligned with the existing alley behind the plaza and then exit straight down to Cherry Street. Next slide, please. And so what we expect to get out of the project is 30 to 35 affordable housing units. It'll be a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. Now, as the council may remember, earlier the project site was a bit smaller and it was mostly made up of studio units, but we were able to identify a small city parcel located between Wheeler Plaza and the existing site. And by adding that to the project, we're able to expand the size of the units so we could get one, two, and three-bedroom units and make it a more family-oriented development to help meet a great need we're seeing in the community and to also help make the development more attractive towards tax credit financing. Next slide, please. And so in terms of the city contribution, the city has an escrow already allocated $2.8 million for acquisition of the property at 1232 Cherry Street, which is needed to help round out the site and enable us to relocate the alley. And then the council has allocated $4 million for project development. $1 million comes out of that $4 million for this pre-development loan agreement. And so what this agreement will do is help to facilitate funding for pre-development due diligence, architectural and design services, approvals and entitlements, and other related work, and really help the project start to move forward. It does not commit the city to approving the project at this point, and then the remaining $3 million will be distributed at a later date according to terms of a development and disposition agreement, which we need to come before the council for approval. And that $1 million comes from Fund 29, which is the city's housing and lieu fund. With that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Adam, Vice Mayor McDowell, and then Councilmember Dugan?
Thank you. Adam, just two quick questions. I just wanted to confirm that with the $1 million on our agenda tonight, that's a loan. Correct, okay. And then what is the timeframe for getting this project, seeing it all the way through? I know we're so very early in the early stages, and I just think it's really important to kind of clarify for the community what the timeline could be.
Yeah, so, you know, we're still a little ways out from where we get to the point of construction or anything like that. Right now, it's just going through design and pursuing entitlements for the project and helping to flush out what the project will actually look like. In terms of entitlements, we expect that to perhaps happen and maybe get approvals in 2022, in the first half of 2022 ideally. That's the goal we're aiming for right now. And then sometime after that, if approval goes through, there's one construction will begin.
Great. Thank you very much for the presentation tonight.
All right, Councilmember Dugan?
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Vice Mayor McDowell. I appreciate you pulling this item because it is such a terrific project, and I commend staff for all the good work on this. Having a 100% below-market rate project like this in our downtown core is just fantastic. And I know there's a lot of work assembling those parcels, et cetera, so we've done some good work on this. And my only question is, you know, I know this is kind of a typical first phase of a project, the due diligence and the initial planning stages. Just are there any showstopper-type issues foreseen, or, you know, have you bumped into anything yet, or is it all normal course, full speed ahead on this one?
Yeah, so far, everything's normal. The one thing that has delayed us slightly is we're waiting on a court date to determine the final purchase price of the property at 1232 Cherry Street, and there have been delays in the courts as a result of COVID. So we're just, we're kind of waiting to figure out when we'll get that date set and can finalize that price, which will be necessary before we can move to doing the DDA.
I see. And I'm sorry, that's the price, the purchase price is not finalized?
That's right. The final price has to be determined by the court, but we have an appraisal for it, and we have a good idea of what it will be, but we just have to have it confirmed.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment?
I do not see any hands.
Okay, thank you. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through L.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? All right, Crystal, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rapp?
Yes. Can I just ask one procedural question? Since that was pulled, do we have to, can we just put it back in the consent calendar, or do we have to vote on that separately?
Since it occurred before the vote, you can just vote on it all at the same time.
Got it. I just appreciate the clarification. And yes.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Yes.
And Mayor Carmelo Jimenez?
Yes. Okay, so that moves us to item eight, A, Study Session Discussing the Draft Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan, and we'll be taking a report from Adam Locar, Management Analyst and Sustainability Specialist.
Great. Thank you all. Good evening to all City Council members. Again, my name is Adam Locar. I'm a management analyst in our city manager's office. Also joining me today are Tammy Seal and Eli Crispy from Placeworks, our consultants on the project. And we're here today to give you a presentation on the draft climate mitigation and adaptation plan, just answer any of your questions and allow an opportunity for you to provide any feedback. This is just a look at the project team. Rounding it out on the city side is Tara Peterson, our Assistant City Manager, and Cole McDonald. And on the Placeworks side, the associates, Jack and Justin, Jessica Robbins. I'll start things off just with kind of an overview and provide some context behind this project. We already, as a city, have an existing climate action plan. It was adopted in 2009 as part of our general plan update. It's a strategic plan to reduce our community's greenhouse gas emissions, and it set the target of reducing them 15% below 2005 levels and identified 21 measures to achieve that target. As you'll see in a moment, as of the most recent year, we have data in 2018, we are 25% below 2005 levels. So we've already surpassed our 2020 goal. So the new plan, the Climate Mitigation and Adaptation Plan, we're calling it CMAP for short, it both updates and expands on the 2009 climate action plan, really to ensure that the city remains consistent with state regulations related to greenhouse gas reductions and also other changing conditions. So it provides new greenhouse gas reduction goals looking out to the year 2030 and 2050, and identifies strategies to achieve those targets. In addition to that, it also looks at potential climate change-related impacts and vulnerabilities and identifies strategies that support kind of climate adaptation and resilience. It provides an implementation and monitoring program to kind of guide staff in executing the plan, and will also have an environmental review that's consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act. This is just a big layout of the document. The executive summary just provides a high-level overview. The introduction describes both the purpose and the kind of regulatory framework and how the plan was prepared. The greenhouse gas emissions chapter is an analysis of our emissions, both inventory and a forecast of those emissions going forward, and sets up the greenhouse gas reduction targets. The vulnerability to climate change chapter includes the process for developing the vulnerability assessment and provides an overview of the city's populations and assets and how they may be impacted by climate-related hazards. The greenhouse gas emission reduction pathway provides the goals, strategies, and actions chosen to help San Carlos achieve the reduction targets, including the amount of emissions reduced for each strategy and the associated co-benefits. And then the adaptation pathway chapter is very similar. It's just focused on climate change adaptation. And then it finishes with an implementation strategy describing how the plan will be implemented. I'll talk a little bit about preparation and timing. We began this project over a year ago, starting kind of with technical analysis of both our vulnerabilities to climate change and our greenhouse gas emissions. Over the winter and spring, we spent time developing both the mitigation and adaptation strategies. And now here we are in the summer, preparing and publishing the draft plan. So throughout this process, we strive to create opportunities for public engagement through a variety of different means to ensure that the CMAP is reflective of our community's desires, values, and expectations. So in the first phase of community outreach, we announced the plan through, the project through a spotlight newsletter. We went and presented to all the city commissions to, you know, announce the project and invite participation. And then we hosted two workshops in August and October of last year to kind of kick off the project, show the community the revised greenhouse gas inventories, the vulnerability assessment, and gather their thoughts on possible actions the city could take. We then took that feedback and crafted kind of high-level strategies, which then we took back to the community in February this year with another, a third workshop, to get their input on those strategies. It was also at this time that we engaged with different stakeholder groups, like representatives from the business community, from local environmental groups, and also key partner agencies that will be assisting us in implementing this plan. We also met as city staff and again presented to all the city commissions to provide feedback on the draft strategies. And Phase Three is where we find ourselves here tonight. We have developed and released the public review draft CMAP. We'll be accepting public comment on this through July, at which we were intending to go to the Planning Commission and to make a formal recommendation before returning to city council later this summer for possible adoption. With that, I'm going to hand things off to Eli Crispy to talk a little bit more about the actual components of the plan.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, council members. As Adam mentioned, I will begin with going through some of the technical components of the CMAP.
Looks like you close it and we pull it up again.
Thank you. If you could skip ahead a couple of slides, please. So the vulnerability assessment describes how climate-related hazards like drought and sea level rise are expected to change. So we'll begin with the vulnerability assessment. It identifies, as Adam mentioned, people and assets that are most at risk of climate-related hazards and how susceptible they are. And this is really building on a lot of existing work that has been completed over the past two years, and it ties into the city's ongoing general plan update. So it will inform the safety element component of that process. There are areas of San Carlos that are at specific risk of individual hazards. Certainly areas near the shoreline are at risk of sea level rise, and that includes some of the areas that have seen a lot of new business development lately. It is possible that without action, some of those areas could be permanently underwater in the latter half of the century. Areas along the creeks and especially in the low-lying areas south of downtown face an elevated risk of flooding, while neighborhoods closer to the hills have a higher risk of wildfires. And certainly, there are some hazards like extreme heat and drought that may affect all parts of the city more or less equally. So the CMAP itself goes into much greater detail about the vulnerability assessment, but it is worth calling out a few of the specific findings. So we found that an increase in extreme heat days, along with increases in air pollution from more wildfire activity, is likely to create higher health risks for many different populations, and that includes senior citizens, persons with disabilities, younger children, persons with chronic health conditions, and a number of others. Many population groups, especially those with limited mobility, are likely to face challenges during evacuation events, and those types of events may become more frequent. And the vulnerability assessment also found potential disruptions to the energy network, and that can occur from wildfire, extreme heat, and severe weather events. So that's a quick overview of the background of the climate adaptation side of things, and I'll now talk about the greenhouse gas components in the CMAP. So a greenhouse gas inventory is part of the foundational work of the CMAP, and this is an assessment of the greenhouse gas emissions that are attributed to San Carlos. In the CMAP, we look at both the emissions from the entire community, residents, businesses, visitors, and so on, as well as those from the operations of the city government. So the CMAP looks at emissions as far back as 2005, in the case of the community, and 2015, in the case of city operations, and charts how emissions have changed since then. This goes into a little more detail about what is included in the two different inventories. And you can see that the community-wide inventory is meant to cover the range of activities that occur in San Carlos, while the city operations inventory, that's really focusing on what is happening at city facilities and who is using those facilities. So here are the results of the community-wide greenhouse gas emissions from 2005 to 2018. As Adam mentioned, they are, as of 2018, 25% below 2005 levels. So they have gone down pretty consistently. Transportation, that's the green bar in this chart, that is the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in all years, followed by residential and non-residential energy use, which are represented by the orange and the red bars near the bottom. Once we assess the historic greenhouse gas emissions, we can then project what those emissions will be like in the future. So we start by assuming that no action is taken to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So as the population grows, as the economy grows, greenhouse gas emissions increase. Next, we consider the benefits of existing state programs and how those play a part in reducing future emissions. And lastly, we look at the benefits of existing local and regional programs on top of that, and we get a sense of what greenhouse gas emissions would be like if existing things were carried forward, but if the CMAP were not in place. So here are the results of that analysis. And you can see that without any existing programs at any level, emissions in San Carlos grow as the population grows. That's the top row in this table. Once state programs are factored in, the emissions are fairly steady out to 2050. And then when local programs, such as PCE, are factored in, emissions start to decline. So by 2030 and 2050, emissions are a little bit below where they were in 2018. And I should note that this does not include the recently adopted all-electric reach code that is assessed elsewhere in the cap, and that will bring emissions down even more, along with the other policies in CMAP. And here's a larger list of some of the actions that San Carlos has taken from the existing cap to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions so far. As we just showed, these are likely to continue reducing greenhouse gas emissions in the future, and these have helped to play a foundation in developing some of the new greenhouse gas reduction strategies that are in the CMAP. So with these existing emission reduction strategies factored in, you see that the overall distribution of emissions doesn't change too much. Transportation does remain the largest source, but it does keep emissions well below both the 2005 baseline and where emissions were back in 2018. And with that, we can get into the greenhouse gas production and the climate adaptation strategies that are in the CMAP. So on the greenhouse gas side, the strategies are meant to reduce greenhouse gas emissions on a path that is consistent with the state's targets. So California has adopted a target of reducing statewide greenhouse gas emissions 40% below 1990 levels by 2030, and is working on a goal of, or working towards a goal of 80% below 1990 levels by 2050. So that's the pathway for reductions that the CMAP puts San Carlos on. I should point out that these are targets, and the pathways that go along with these targets, these are meant to be a floor for greenhouse gas reductions, not a ceiling. The city does have the option to go beyond this pathway to further reduce greenhouse gas emissions, or the city can prioritize certain measures or accelerate these reductions and try and hit these targets sooner. There are likely to be some new policy and technology innovations in the future that can further reduce greenhouse gas emissions that are not accounted for in the CMAP simply because we're not aware of them. So I consider that the 2009 cap doesn't, didn't include the full benefit of PCE, but the city took advantage of that opportunity when it became available, and it played a significant role, as you saw, in reducing emissions. So there may be more currently unknown opportunities like that that become viable in the future. On the adaptation side, there aren't really specific targets to hit, but the CMAP does make sure that the city is complying with state laws to assess the harm that is posed by climate change and to develop strategies that improve community resilience to climate change and associated hazards. So getting into the strategies a little, on the greenhouse gas reduction side, there are 33 strategies in the CMAP, and they are organized around eight goals that are really meant to reduce five key sources of greenhouse gas emissions in the community. Each of these strategies does include a number of targeted, what we're calling, implementation actions that are very focused items to help the city put these strategies into effect. There are two ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. One is to decrease the amount of an activity that produces the emissions, and the second is to decrease what is called the carbon intensity. That is the amount of emission produced per unit of activity. So for example, if we were reducing emissions from transportation, the CMAP can reduce the amount that people are driving, make it easier for people to use other forms of transportation, for example. Or the CMAP can decrease the carbon intensity, and that would be by increasing the use of fuel-efficient and electric vehicles. So the CMAP is leveraging both of these strategies wherever possible. To walk you through some of the sectors in the CMAP and the associated policies, I want to start with the energy side of things. So recall that energy is one of the major sources of greenhouse gas emissions, and emissions from electricity have dropped 75% from 2005 to 2018, and that is largely thanks to PCE and the clean sources of electricity that it provides. Natural gas emissions have also declined since 2005. There is a much smaller amount of decrease, since there isn't really an available clean source of natural gas the way that there is with electricity, but the new all-electric reach code will certainly help to reduce these emissions in the future. Looking at some of the energy-focused strategies in the CMAP, you can see that it includes energy efficiency, renewable energy. you can see that it includes energy efficiency, renewable energy, decreases in natural gas use, and improving the resilience of the energy system to help protect against power outages. And that includes providing more resilience against the public safety power shut-off events, the PSPSs. On the transportation side, there was more traffic on the road in San Carlos in 2018 than there was in 2005. I'm sure that's not a surprise to anyone. But thanks to cleaner vehicles, emissions from transportation actually fell 14% over that period. So even though more people were driving, there are more cars on the road, total transportation emissions were down largely because of cleaner cars. So the CMAP builds on existing efforts and new state-level activities to bring these emissions down even more. The CMAP is meant to make it easier to you, for residents and visitors and employees to use walking and biking and micro-mobility as ways to get around. The CMAP supports increased use of mass transit. It allows for land uses that are less car-dependent. And it also helps with the transition to increases in electric vehicles, building off some of the recent state declarations around this topic and what we hope to see soon from the federal government as well. Water, wastewater, off-road equipment, solid waste, these are smaller sources of greenhouse gas emissions. But it's still worth addressing in the CMAP. And I want to point out that emissions from many of these sources were lower in 2018 than they had been in previous years, and that is despite the city's population growth. So the strategies associated with waste are not only about improving composting and recycling and keeping waste out of landfills, as important as that is, but they also are meant to promote a transition away from disposable items and towards more reuse and repair, so that there is less waste being produced in the community in the first place. There are also a number of strategies around water efficiency and supporting cleaner construction and cleaner landscaping equipment. So when we add up the combined benefits of all these strategies, that is what you see here. Given the levels of implementation that are assumed in the CMAP, there is a pathway for San Carlos to reduce greenhouse gas emissions 41% below 1990 levels by 2030 and 84% below 1990 levels by 2050. So that exceeds the reduction pathways set by the state. Again, the city does have the option to go farther or can accelerate this pathway if desired. But the city is on track to go beyond what the state has currently set for itself. On the adaptation side, the adaptation strategies are really meant to respond to some of the specific findings in the vulnerability assessment. That includes findings that specific hazards such as extreme heat days are likely to occur more frequently. There is likely to be an increase in regional wildfire activity, and of course, the rising bay levels. The adaptation strategies in the CMAP address the full range of climate change-related hazards that are assessed, but they do focus on some of the issues of greatest concern. So this includes new education and awareness programs, increased community services, especially for vulnerable persons. There are recommendations for capital improvements. And there is also an effort to support more regional collaboration to address a lot of these issues in partnership with neighboring communities, with San Mateo County, and with the Bay Area region as a whole, since these hazards, of course, do not simply stop at San Carlos's borders. So tonight, we are asking that the council look at the components of the draft CMAP and provide any feedback. And that the council recommends that the CMAP come back for adoption following a public review period. Following tonight's hearing, the project team will take and address any public comment that we receive. The CMAP will go to Planning Commission for a recommendation later on. And then we will return to the council, hopefully, for approval. And I recognize that was a lot of information all at once, but that is the end of our presentation, and we would certainly be happy to answer any questions you may have. So thank you.
Thank you, Eli. Thank you, Adam. Any questions from council? All right, Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Eli, for the great presentation. I wanted to start my questions by just saying a big thank you to everyone who worked on this plan. It's really incredible, the amount of work and detail that is included. And I also want to send my appreciations to the community for all of the stakeholder engagement that happened, fed into this process, workshops and surveys. It was all just really, really helpful information. So thank you. I have three questions, and then I'll defer to my colleagues, but I might have a few more after everyone has had a chance to participate. My first question is Table 9 on Page 30 lists San Carlos demographic projections. And it notes that jobs in 2020 are listed at 19,480, while in 2030, jobs are listed at 19,830, which is an increase of only 350 jobs. And that doesn't seem to me like a realistic projection, given all the development that we know is coming to the East Side. So I'm wondering your perspective on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out. What is happening there is you see sort of a mix of two different sources that had to be used. The 2018 numbers are based on data from the US Census and the California Economic Development Department. The future projections are looking at, are using recent projections from the Association of Bay Area Governments. I would point out that even though the 2020 number is quite close to 2030, if you compare the 2018 to 2030 growth, it is close to 4,000 new jobs being added. So basically, what happened is the Association of Bay Area Governments had assumed a larger jump in growth from, say, five or 10 years ago to 2020, and then smaller growth out beyond 2030. And I think what we're seeing right now is perhaps a bit more of a delayed growth. So I think rather than looking at 2020 to 2030, if you look at 2018 to 2030, that should provide a more realistic view of the types of job growth that is anticipated in the CMAP. And I think it more closely matches the types of job growth that has been seen in the community.
Okay, that's only an increase of 3,000 jobs, and I think that we're looking at significantly more. So I would probably just ask staff to maybe put an asterisk by those numbers and, I don't know, somehow refer to our East Side vision plan and the amount of jobs that we're expecting. Because I just don't feel like those numbers are accurate. My next question is, Page 31 discusses the community-wide GHD forecast and states that 2020 numbers do not reflect changes in behavior and activity associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm just wondering if there is an opportunity in the plan to call out how the pandemic could lead to greater changes in our society, specifically regarding telecommuting, hybrid workplaces, working from home, not commuting so much, and, you know, contributing to, you know, greenhouse gases.
I think there's certainly opportunity to mention that potential.
Okay, thank you. And then my final question is residential energy is discussed on Page 54. And it notes that residential natural gas is anticipated to increase by about 7% between 2005 and 2050 as a result of an increase in population. I think you alluded to that in your presentation. But it also says, "Without factoring in amendments to the San Carlos Building Code that require most new buildings not to use natural gas." And so you mentioned that REACH codes are talked about in the plan, but I didn't. I'm a little confused on why our REACH codes weren't factored in to the natural gas increases that are anticipated.
This work was done before the REACH code was adopted. So it just, it wasn't treated, the REACH code was not treated as an existing activity at the time this work was prepared. So that is why it is assessed separately as one of the strategies and was not considered an existing action. Assessing it as a strategy also allowed for more detail around some of the implementation actions, which are meant to ensure that the REACH code is not only receives proper education and awareness in the community, but that the CMAP directs there to be a pathway for the REACH code to be updated and re-adopted on a regular cycle to help maintain those emissions. So we wanted to kind of give it the highlight and the prominence that it deserved, which is why it's treated separately as a strategy.
And I guess it's too late in the process to go back and try and edit those numbers to see what would be a more realistic expectation now that we have the REACH code?
Well, the reductions from the REACH code are indicated in Chapter 4 of the CMAP, I believe.
Okay, I'll go back and check that out. I'll defer to my colleagues now. Thank you very much for your answers.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and yeah, thank you for this report, staff, and placeworks, and appreciate all the community outreach. Very thorough, very extensive, kind of my first time really looking at kind of the full width of what, as a municipality, we can consider around climate action, which I'll save my comments on the importance of what we're doing here for later in discussion. But a couple of brief questions. First, you know, kind of glad to see, obviously, our study of reductions in greenhouse gas emissions. And just, you know, how do I come to understand that as far as, you know, obviously, we're not out there measuring that? How are those things estimated? And, you know, how accurate is that really? Can we really hang our hat on those estimates? And, you know, kind of how do you guys, like, what's the degree of confidence I can, I can put in estimates like that?
We are fairly confident in these numbers. You know, we do follow all of the guidance and the best practices that are endorsed by the state of California, that are recommended for use by local governments. This process is used, you know, up and down the state and largely throughout, not only the US, but in many other countries. So we have a fairly high level of confidence that the numbers we're working with are accurate, and that the way they're assessed is kind of the best available method, given the availability of the data.
Could you just give like a quick example, like, you know, our number one source is transportation. So what is that? We measure like automobile registrations or miles used, like, you know, just, just give me a little brief flavor of how that gets measured?
Certainly. So in the case that you gave with the transportation, there is a traffic model for San Mateo County and for, well, there's one for the entire Bay Area, but there's also one for San Mateo County. And through BackMed and A-Bag, we have, you know, they have read that model and looked at what is the amount of trips that are generated by community members in San Carlos. So that's trips within the community and also trips between San Carlos and another location. So that gives us the amount of miles that people are traveling on an annual basis. We then combine that with information from the Resources Board and from the DMV about the types of vehicles that are registered here. And that gives us a pretty detailed assessment of the fuel efficiency. How many vehicles are diesel versus gasoline versus electric versus other fuels? And how much fuel they're using per mile? So we can bring all that information together, and that gives us the transportation-related emissions. So I don't, I wouldn't claim that it is absolutely 100%. There is no error, there are no margin anywhere at all. But it is pretty, it is accurate. It is consistent with the way this is done throughout the state. And we are, as I said, pretty confident in these numbers.
Okay. No, thank you. I appreciate that color. And, you know, and what I most appreciate is that, you know, all that thorough analysis boils down to, you know, 10 goals and 45 stated strategies. And some of those, you know, it felt like we could really sink our teeth into. But I was curious, is that listed as presented? Is that prioritized in any way? You know, is there any way as policymakers, we should be thinking about how to prioritize those? Or, you know, how do we go about digesting that? Because it's pretty hard to keep 45 things in mind simultaneously.
And it's not currently prioritized. I would certainly defer to, you know, city staff and to you and other decision-makers on how it should be prioritized. What we've tried to do is lay out the information that can support making those decisions, the level of reductions that are achieved, some estimates around, you know, what it would take as far as costs or other resources, funding that might be available, partner agencies, and so on. So we're just trying to provide the tools and the information. And then we hope that the city will go through that prioritization process kind of as the time and as the resources become available.
Okay, I see. I just, personally, I didn't really notice the tools or the data to prioritize those. Or, you know, like, the relative impact expected from each or the relative cost of each. So, you know, any more color we can gain on that would be appreciated. But, great, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rack.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just also want to thank staff, Adam and Tara and Eli for all the great work on this and all the community input. I think that's fantastic, and it's wonderful to see so much come together here. I had a couple kind of comments slash questions. I just want to reiterate what the Vice Mayor mentioned in terms of the growth in jobs. And, you know, we're looking at significant footprint in terms of commercial development and, you know, making sure that we're capturing that when we're thinking about the reduction. I know the REACH codes will have some impact on that, because we covered commercial development for that. But I guess my question is, and I didn't see it in the larger, the set of goals, is, you know, is there a way to capture, you know, maybe some recommendations or that staff, when we look at maybe in terms of some of the building codes and zoning codes, that we try to do more around electric vehicles or on transportation? I know that sort of transportation demand is in there, but some more specifics around the commercial development, given that. I think that's, I just can see our transportation sort of emissions and output going up significantly. And is there a way to sort of capture that maybe a little bit better to kind of target on that?
I'll say that, yeah, there is the transportation demand management strategies in the plan, and there is other strategies aimed at encouraging kind of alternative forms of transportation and transitioning to electric vehicles. I'll say too that there are, you know, avenues through building code amendments, like we adopted with the REACH code that require increased level of electric vehicle charging infrastructure for new commercial development as well. So that if people are driving to work, they have the opportunity to charge when they're there, that are included and explored in this plan.
And we talked at all about, thank you, Adam, for that clarification on that. Things like bike share and other rideshare program, sort of bike share specifically. We don't have that in the city in San Carlos and sort of the potential impact for that. I don't remember that being part of the Bicycle Master Plan, but something I wanted to just sort of ask about.
Yeah, there is a strategy in there related to a micro-mobility pilot program. So something that the CMAP does recommend, that we kind of research and consider.
Perfect. That's all the questions I had. Thank you for all the work on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, staff, great presentation. I'm not sure who this question is going to be directed to, but I'm just wondering, I'm very impressed with how much, how much progress we've made in the last 15 years. And I'm wondering if there's any other areas that you feel maybe we could improve our performance over, over what the state goals or guidelines are? Is there anything that maybe we could have done better but didn't do better? Or are we on track with in just about every area?
Yeah, I think it's safe to say that we're moving at a similar pace of most of the cities in our region. All of these strategies that are identified in this plan look to go, you know, build on what the, what the state is already doing and get us to the goals, because we know that the state action alone won't get us there. But I don't have any specifics in mind for things that we would do differently.
That's, that's right. I wasn't expecting that you might, just sort of a general question to see if there are anything you felt, you know, maybe we had not reached our goal. Most of the other questions I have or had were answered by the presentation, so I'm very grateful for that. And the only other question I have is that on that Strategy 41, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan, I'm wondering if the study is going to include the possibility of constructing new evacuation routes out of our hills?
The Community Wildfire Protection Plan usually focuses on fuels reductions and vulnerabilities. And I believe that evacuation routes are typically something that would be considered in the, in the safety element. Eli, I'm not sure if you have any other information on this. Do you?
Yeah, I mean, I think the safety element is certainly a good place. Yeah, I mean, I think the safety element is certainly a good place to discuss evacuation routes, you know, especially now with the general plan being updated. The Community Wildfire Protection Plan could certainly identify a potential need, but I think there are probably better strategies, like the general plan, the safety element, the circulation element, where it might be more appropriate to identify a new evacuation route, if such a thing is not in theory.
I realize that it's not necessarily, you know, exactly correlating with the Climate Action Plan, but I would hope that there would be a reference to it so that it would give it a little bit of a weight when we get, when we start talking about the other areas where it will be important.
This is Tara. One of the things that we are doing is making sure that all these plans are connected to one another. Al might be able to better speak about what the safety element is going to include. Al, are you able to answer Councilmember Collins's question?
Yes, thank you. And good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. So we'll be looking at things that are currently in our general plan, like mitigation for fire and earthquakes and other natural disasters. So pretty much anything you can think of with regard to natural disasters. And it's a policy document, so the safety element is a policy document, and we'll be working with our fire department very closely and law enforcement as well to bring some ideas to the community. We'll be starting with those community meetings on the safety element in the next month or two.
Thank you, Al, and thanks to everybody. Those are my questions.
Thank you. So I also want to lend my thanks to the community for participating in this process, and I know you'll continue to do so and provide your ideas and share your concerns. I want to thank Adam, Nicole, Tara, and Placeworks for your help on this. I was really pleased with really how thorough the document was and all the various inputs that went into it. So thank you. So just a couple, you know, questions. I want to kind of circle back to something Councilmember Collins was talking about a little bit in terms of the goal and the aggressiveness of the goal in terms of meeting state standards. I think it's fair to say that broadly, the community is, you know, extremely concerned with climate change. We just went through an early heat wave. Councilmember Rack referenced the drought conditions that we're under that are quite severe this time of year. I understand British Columbia hit north of 100 degrees for the first time ever in recorded history today. So I think there's a kind of a general feeling that, you know, we have a crisis right now, and, you know, we really need to address it as fast as we possibly can. So can you speak to us a little bit about kind of the reliance on state goals? Are those something that are, you know, we feel comfortable that we can hit? Are those something that we feel concerned about hitting, but it's a stretch goal? Is it easy to hit those goals? And if so, you know, would you recommend that we approach the targets from a more aggressive standpoint?
I would say that what you've got so far is, in our view, what is a aggressive but also a viable and achievable pathway. And we certainly don't want to recommend something that, you know, would go beyond what we understand to be the city's ability to achieve. You know, we recognize that that doesn't do anyone a whole lot of good. So we have tried to lay out a pathway that meets and slightly exceeds the state goals, which are themselves quite aggressive, and do so in a way that is consistent with available with the values and with the direction of the community members, and we think is consistent with the resources that are available to the community. Certainly, if a more aggressive target or if a more accelerated target is something that was desired, you know, there are ways to achieve that. It would depend on whether the funding to do that would be available and if the community was sort of ready, if you will, just to commit to those more aggressive reductions. So we have, you know, we've looked at what that might take, and the effort would be quite substantial.
Okay, thank you. All right. And then kind of a couple more questions. So getting with respect to that sense of urgency, I think there's also a feeling that, you know, it might be helpful if we were to have more regular conversations about this and discussion points. So Adam, you know, right now, we have pretty much on the docket that we have a check-in once a year on this. What might be the possibility for us to have more regular updates on our progress to goal and target here?
We defer to Jeff or Tara maybe on this question about procedure here on checking in.
Yeah, sure. This is Tara. We would, anytime there was something, any progress to be made, we will go ahead and add something into the council newsletter. So it could be much more often than even monthly, but we would want to make sure something had happened and not just waste the council's time or the community's time with things that are potential or that are in the works, but we really want to be showing progress.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. And then the other feedback that I've received from the community is around the levy. So there's an effort underway, One Shoreline, which is taking a look initially at the Foster City, San Mateo area up north towards SFO, around increasing the height of the levy. And I noticed, Adam, in one of the graphs that you showed, that there is a portion of San Carlos that, where there's a levy that is kind of vulnerable, I guess. And so I'm just wondering, kind of, where are we in the process as the city of San Carlos and participating in increasing the height of the levy to address bay level rise? And I see, Jeff, you have your video on, so I'm assuming you might want to address this question.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an issue that's sort of longstanding in San Carlos as well as our neighboring communities. So this is not a new issue for us. I think it's a good issue because it helps paint the picture that things like the CMAP help nurture our other plans and guiding documents, like the general plan and its various elements, as well as our strategic plan and our budgeting process. And over time, certain things just become part of our operating day-to-day. You know, they sink below the water line and just become a normal, no pun intended there. They become part of our normal thinking and operations, and the levy is one of those. We've raised the levy before in our history, and in fact, in the not-too-distant history, we've raised the levy. And what we do, because we have such a small linear footage, I think it's around 500 feet of levy of a system that obviously, you know, is many tens of thousands of feet on our side of the bay long, we're a very small player. So we participate in the regional dialogue around it, but really what we look to is our neighbors on either, to either side of us, on the Bay, Redwood City, and San Mateo and Foster City in those areas, for what they're doing with levy projects. And then, and then we piggyback on them. So we'll include our segment as part of their project and work out an agreement with those agencies to, you know, pay for our linear footage. It makes the project bigger, more cost competitive when it goes out for bid, makes the project in maintaining the levies more competitive, more affordable for the taxpayers. But unlike some of our neighbors, because it's such a small project for us, it's not really been something that we needed to do a lot of long-range planning for to be sure that we had the financial resources in place to be able to take on a large-scale project. This is, really falls more in line with a lot of just the annual maintenance projects that we tend to do in the city. You know, it's not a small number, but it's not a big number by any stretch either. And so when those projects are ready to go forward, we usually know, you know, at least a couple of years in advance, and we build those into the city's capital budget, bring them forward for council consideration, and then the project goes forward and the levies get raised. So I'm confident that, you know, that San Carlos very much has this issue well in hand and will continue to be, you know, a good partner within the region in terms of maintaining our levies. We're certainly not going to be the low point in the system.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that. Vice Mayor McDowell, I see you have your hand up again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you're finished with your questions, I had two very quick ones, and I really appreciate you asking the sea level rise question because that was on my list. I know that's top of mind for a lot of people in our community. My question is on the neighborhood hubs that are mentioned in Strategy 13, which is encouraging the establishment of these hubs within existing residential neighborhoods that would be kind of small-scale retail and service uses. And I'm having a hard time envisioning what that would look like in San Carlos, so I'm wondering if you could just paint a little color on that. I, the only place that I could really imagine it happening is if the Black Mountain property is, turns into some kind of a neighborhood. So just curious about that.
All right. This is Tara. I think Al would be most suited to answer that question.
Yes, good evening once again. So San Carlos set the stage for corner markets and small retail spots in well-established neighborhoods when we did the 2009 general plan update. And they were called neighborhood hubs, and it was really a very significant shift in thinking at that time. And the community supported the idea of even in, again, these single-family residential neighborhoods, well-established, to say, there could be a parcel on the corner that might have a small market like the one we have in the Devonshire area. And so we have it in our Landes document as something that is permitted. You'd have to get a use permit to do it. So someone, let's say you have a corner lot in a neighborhood, theoretically, you could come to the city and say, I want to either convert my house into a small market or, you know, maybe a coffee place or something like that. And you'd go to the planning commission, and you'd have a hearing, and there would be consideration of a use permit. And they would consider things like where people would park and any mitigations to the neighborhood. So we set the stage with that a number of years ago, but as you can imagine, it might be somewhat of a challenge to actually go ahead and do that.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Anything else to add to that?
I don't, but if there's other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Al. And then my final question, this is just very quick. I noticed in Strategy 2, there's a topic, K-12 Energy Conservation and Efficiency Education. And I was just wondering if there's a role to play for our Youth Advisory Council in that strategy?
Absolutely. I think there is, and we did present to the Youth Advisory Council to get their thoughts on this, as youth are inherently a stakeholder when it comes to climate change, and I think there definitely is a role. We also, just as a sign, we presented to a high school green team as well to get their thoughts on some of these strategies, and I'm really excited about them as well. But we definitely see education as a key component to implementing this plan.
That's great. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right. I'm not seeing any additional hands from council. So Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item?
Yes, I see one hand at the moment. Two hands now. First up is Ellen Jacobs-Dooly. You should be able to unmute.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor Palmer Lohan and City Council members. I am so grateful to the seriousness and urgency with which you're tackling this problem, and it's so deep and so involved and so complex, that I really want to thank you for all the time and energy you're putting into understanding and trying to figure out a way out of this or a way through this. I'm representing Citizens Climate Lobby. We have 69 San Carls in our San Mateo County chapter. And just briefly, Citizens Climate Lobby is a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization. We have like 185,000 supporters across the country in every congressional district. And one of the things that I'm asking of the council tonight is to consider taking action at the national level. And what I mean by that is endorsing a bill that's in Congress right now that our Congresswoman Jackie Speer has co-sponsored called the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act. Basically, it's a carbon pricing bill, and it would charge polluters a fee based on the carbon emissions content. And it would, the revenue that was collected from that would go to American households. So there would be no growth in government. It is a very people-friendly, health-friendly, climate-friendly policy that we, that really needs to be part of a climate package. And city councils around the country are endorsing this, chambers of Congress, chambers of commerce, excuse me, and lots of entities that I couldn't, too many to name here. So my question is, my request is to have you pass a resolution to endorse HR 2307 and send a letter to Representative Speer, thanking her for her co-sponsorship and leadership on this issue in Congress, because we need to mitigate the carbon emissions from the source, as well as all the great work that we're doing here locally. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, Ellen. Next up, we have a former council member and mayor, Mark Olbert. You should be able to unmute.
I figured out how to unmute, Crystal. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Palmer Lohan, Vice Mayor McDowell, and other council members. Thank you for taking time for my comment. Before I get to it, I will just mention in passing that if those job projection numbers that were used in the analysis actually hold true, somebody had better contact all of the people doing major developments in San Carlos right now and tell their accountants to start writing off all the assets they're investing in, because obviously, there'll be no people working in them. So I hope that's something that can be adjusted before the plan gets finalized. The main thing I wanted to point out is it's interesting that in my review of the plan, there was one word even that I did not see mentioned at all, which actually, I think, potentially has a huge impact on being able to make a significant change, and that's housing. A major source, if not the major source of greenhouse gas emissions in the United States is transportation, and a big part of that is people commuting to and from work. You put jobs closer to where people live, and you cut that down significantly. You also have a lot of other benefits as well, like improving traffic patterns and removing traffic density. So I hope that that's something that the council will consider adding to the plan, because housing is a critical issue on many fronts, and it's yet another critical issue in greenhouse gas emission reduction. And it's also something that frankly, I think, could get broad-based community support behind, precisely because, as Mayor Palmer Lohan pointed out, there is such extreme urgency in people's minds about doing something about the greenhouse gas crisis that we've created for ourselves. So thank you very much for taking my comment, and good luck with the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. The last speaker we have is Suzanne Emerson.
Have I managed to unmute myself?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm happy to see that council and staff have put so much work into this draft CMAP. I'm happy to see that individual elements are assigned to different city departments to track and be responsible for, and I like that it includes annual reporting on status of implementation. There are a couple of things that I'd like to point out. There was discussion earlier about the goal. Palo Alto's goal is 80% below 1990 levels by 2030 instead of the goal that's listed here of that level by 2050. Menlo Park has a very aggressive goal of zero carbon by 2030. I would like to see us aiming for something more than just the state minimum. Many of the individual goals are not quantifiable with measurable metrics, so when we're saying coordinate or encourage without any indication of what the goal is for those individual elements, it's unclear to me how we would know at an annual report whether or not the city is on track for any of the individual elements or on track as a whole until we do a whole nother greenhouse gas quantification. And the other thing I would like to point out is that although there is an element here... talking about a capital improvement plan for increasing energy efficiency, there is no discussion of how to get the city facilities themselves off of burning gas. We should be changing that to say that by 2022, the city should develop a capital project list and funding strategy to transition city facilities from mixed fuel to all-electric by 2030. Thank you for all your work on this. I will provide some written comments with additional details as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Suzanne, oh, and we do have one more hand, David Crabbe. You should be able to unmute.
Yes, good evening, all.
Hi.
Do you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, I sent you a letter. I know a couple of you read it because you already responded back to me. Thank you. The main essence of that letter was really to, this report is really a good report. They cover a lot of things, but it's big. It's a lot of pages, 300 and some odd pages, a lot of detail in there. And we can get lost in the weeds in terms of what is going to really make the impact and what isn't. And I really urge you to try to prioritize that list a lot more specifically than it is now to the things that are going to make the biggest difference in this whole thing. I remember when Menlo Park was doing their climate change document, they ended up, I believe, with like 10 major elements of that that they were going to emphasize. There was more to it than that, but the point was prioritize the things that they thought were most, going to be most successful and most beneficial to the whole thing. And I urge you to do the same, to really look at, you know, all those different elements. And there are some that are, you know, they're nice, but the question is, you've got so much, only so much time in the city to get accomplished this, this, and where do you put your time and your effort in? And don't spin your wheels on something or put your time into something that may, you may get it accomplished, but it looks like a tiny little blip of 1/100 to 1%, of solving the problem, and try to concentrate on the bigger issues. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David, and that, those are all our hands. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, so at this time, we'll open it up for discussion. All right, we'll go council member Rack and then council member Dugan, followed by Vice Mayor McDowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I appreciate all the public comment. I guess I would just want to just, I think, as I mentioned earlier, I think just a couple of the items that I think we should make sure we consider to some of the larger development east side and the job projections to make sure we're accurate around things. And I just would like to kind of get some thoughts from the staff or in terms of what former Mayor Olbert said about housing, and also any kind of strategy around city buildings or any kind of changes in solar. I know, I think it's something we've looked at before, and it's sort of a little bit challenging because of the makeup of the buildings. But just want to understand if there's any other thought around it. But other than that, I appreciate the work on that and looking forward to the next steps in the process.
Thank you. Councilmember Dugan, was that a question, Adam, or?
Oh, I did have just a question about the housing piece and the city sort of buildings and how we can move towards more electrification, but if Adam or someone else can answer that.
On the housing side of things, I think with this coinciding with the housing element update, I think we look to for that process to go as it's going and really have the discussion around adding housing in the community. On the city facility side, yes, there are strategies that we list in the plan about increasing solar in our community, including that on city facilities. We have done feasibility studies for solar and solar battery backup on a few city facilities. I'm familiar with one at the youth center in particular. So it's something that's been considered and thought about and talked about as part of this effort.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dugan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'll just say, you know, this is such an important topic. Obviously, so many people in our community are concerned about it, and I hear a lot of concern from my colleagues as well. You know, I'll just say, you know, it's coming home to roost. We're feeling it. And climate change, even here with our great climate in San Carlos, recent heat waves. We've lived in San Carlos, the Dugan family, for 20 years now, and we just pulled the trigger on air conditioning, which probably won't help. That'll consume additional energy. So as this thing runs away from us, it just gets worse. Also, investing in air filters. We've had some horrible smoke days in our community. So I think, you know, we all are awake to this issue and whatever we can do. So that means we gotta, you know, and I know this was a very detailed plan. A lot of work went into it, a lot of kind of standard metrics and how this is done has been applied to this, and there's a great place for that. But we can't miss the elephant in the room here, which is San Carlos is at a major inflection point. I think our former mayor, Mark Olbert, pointed that out well. I heard some of my colleagues point it out as well. And yeah, obviously, the job projection is way off in this report. And we really need to be looking at this all through the lens of the fact that we're more than doubling the commercial development in our community over the next five to 10 years. Could be up to 3 million square feet of additional space. That needs to be a hard assumption. We know that's coming. And we need to use this lens to help inform our thinking around that. That is a very major transition for our community, and that can be done a number of ways. We can do it the old-fashioned way and end up with a bunch of offices that sit by themselves, and people have to drive in from far away every day and drive back. Or we can do that in a more balanced way with housing incorporated and a mixed-use context. So we're minimizing travel and trip and really reducing the environmental impact of that significant new development coming. So I really do want to see this report better informed by what we know is coming down the pike so that as policymakers, we can really use that to help us inform this major changes that are coming to the east side of our community. So I do want to really emphasize that because there are some good goals in this. I didn't see any particular way to prioritize my thinking on it. I mean, personally, I think as we inform our thinking about the east side, that probably will be, you know, the best use of our time as a council to prioritize our thinking on the east side through this environmental lens. But that's just a guess, you know. I would like this report to help me think through that. So with the 10 goals and the 45 stated strategies, I really would like some help. You know, which of those will have the greatest impacts? Which of those can be done in a most efficient way that we will likely have budget and resources to accomplish? So, you know, I want this to really be a living, breathing document that we can sink our teeth into because that reflects the importance of this subject and what we need to get done over the next several years as a community. So that's my kind of broad brush input on this. But in general, really great. We're tackling it. And I'm, it encourages me that as a council, it feels like we're all unanimous in how serious so we're taking this issue. So that hardens me, and I'm glad to be part of this process.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. Vice Mayor McDowell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great comments, John. I just wanted to thank you for saying that. I have a couple comments, and then I'll wrap up. But I do think that there's a public education component here that hasn't been touched on yet tonight. And I looked at the city's website today, and there's a climate page, and there's a sustainability page, and they're great. But I did, in reading through all the comments from the workshops and, you know, feedback from the public, it sounds like there's just kind of a general request from residents to help make that information easier to find. Can we package the information? Can we publicize it more? Putting the incentive programs together, listing the grassroots organizations that can offer help, the incentives, the technical assistance programs. I think there's a lot out there. So someone requested suggestions for fair, safe landscaping, which I thought was a really nice idea for us to take on. There is a request for a map of charging stations in San Carlos. So I think if we can do some work into, you know, the education component, that would be very valuable. Strategy six is on rooftop solar, and it mentions continued participation in the SunShares program to increase solar in our community, which is great. I was thinking perhaps SunShares could be linked on the city's solar permitting website to kind of make those, link those two issues. However, I looked at SunShares website today, and it says registration is closed for the 2020 season and discounts expired on November 30th. So I think that's an example of kind of the public looking for information, looking for help, and then feeling frustrated by the process. I too am open to calling out housing in the plan, especially as it affects commuting. I think that's a really valuable, even if it's a box. We have lots of pretty boxes in the plan of where we call things out, and if it can link to the housing element, I think that's valuable. And I too think that, you know, I don't know how this comes back to us, if it's part of the next budget round or how we prioritize funding. I did see, you know, timeframes are listed for each action item, near term, long term. But, you know, we might need to start funding some of the long-term accomplishments now. So I too would love some clarity on that. But in general, I think that, you know, San Carlos can act as a leader, and I'm really proud of our council and our staff and our city for trying to lead by example here. I know that implementation of this plan will require funding and prioritizing that and looking for direction from council. And I think that we've made supporting sustainability issues and addressing climate change as one of our strategic goals, which I'm really proud of. And I think that we're all on the same page of wanting to continue to drive this forward. So also, these goals are a floor and not a ceiling. And, you know, I think that that was a really good point to make tonight. So I'm looking forward to the work ahead and, you know, achieving additional greenhouse gas reductions in the near and long term. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Collins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to once again extend my thanks to staff for the incredible job they've done and all the time I've been on the council. It's, I've been, I felt fortunate to watch the progress of this, and we definitely are headed in the right direction. We've made some dramatic improvements. There's one thing I didn't bring up earlier that was briefly touched on. That's the goal eight regarding, you know, the impact on our water supplies. And I really would like to see us maybe partner with Redwood City in Belmont, possibly some other cities, really get serious about a water recycling program. That is going to potentially make a huge difference. 500 million gallons of wastewater goes into our bay every single day. And if we can recapture some of that and use it for our community members, for nonpotable uses, that would go a long way into addressing our water shortage, which I believe is really only going to get worse. But other than that, it's been a great discussion, and I look forward to our continued progress on it.
Great, thank you. All right.
Oh, sorry. I just want to just, I appreciate Ron bringing up that comment. I think that's definitely something worth looking into. I just want to echo his thoughts on the recycling of water.
Thank you.
All right. So from my perspective, I think we can't act swiftly or decisively enough at this moment in time. I think from a, you know, offense perspective, changing our behaviors and adopting new technologies, and from a defense perspective, addressing that which has already been impacted by the effects of climate change, I think is really important. And those things include the actions that we're taking around mitigating risk of wildfires by herding the goats and clearing the fuels, addressing the bay level rise and the flooding issues that were talked about earlier this evening. I also am very grateful that this council that oversees a community of 30,000 residents and five and a half square miles is taking this very seriously. And I believe that we can certainly do our part to help reverse the trends that we've been facing with respect to climate change and move towards a more sustainable future. I've heard loud and clear tonight, and I concur, that I think from a plan perspective, while extraordinarily thorough, I'm wondering if the 80/20 rule might be at play here. And what I mean by that is, you know, what are the, you know, the few actions that we can take that are going to have the 80% impact that we need to see in a relatively short period of time? So with that, I think, you know, another way to characterize, I think, what I'm hearing council call for, and I'm in alignment with this, is what is the relative contribution of each of the actions that are proposed in terms of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and reversing the trends of climate change so that hopefully we could accelerate the attainment of our goals sooner than later? I do also agree that calling out a stronger linkage with our housing element in this particular plan as well as making sure that our estimates in terms of future population, both for residents as well as people who are traveling to San Carlos every day to work here, is important. And I think we can also link that to, for example, making sure that our transportation demand management plan really encourages the use of shared transportation as well as other forms of mobility. I'm in alignment that education, I think, would be a helpful thing. In particular, I know firsthand the power of youth, understanding the situation with climate change and how that has influenced the actions that we've taken in our family with our changes that we've made around these issues. There are things that we've already talked about as council that we want to see. So we started the conversation on reach codes and wanting to, we've adopted them, so I'm really pleased about that. We also have agreed that we would take another look at those sooner than later. So I would like to make sure that we keep an eye on that as well because after transportation, it is buildings, right, that emit more greenhouse gas emissions. I also know that the partnership with Polis of Clean Energy is a strong one, and the goal there is for that organization to get to 100% carbon-free renewable energy by 2025. That will be really helpful. And there's a couple other things. I wanted to draw attention to the recommendation that we endorse HR 2307. So for future, if the council would be willing to entertain that, we did share our support of that effort when it came to us a couple of years ago. It would be nice to revisit that just to send an indication to Congresswoman Speer that we're in alignment with that approach, that we're supportive of that. And I do like, Tara, your suggestion that we get regular updates through the council newsletters. I think, you know, to Vice Mayor McDowell's suggestion in terms of community education, that a constant source of information would be really helpful. I'd also like to suggest that we take a look to, I think, under Goal Seven, Strategy 2026. There's some efforts that we can do there as well with respect to single-use plastics and restaurants and making sure that a question is asked about whether or not a patron really wants to utilize those utensils. I got some takeout the other day, and they were automatically put in the bag, and I was at home, so I didn't need them. So I think there's just, you know, simple, thoughtful actions that we can take. But again, I think that kind of the big message that I'm hearing is let's make sure that where we put our precious resources, time and energy, that we make sure that we, that the relative contribution of those actions has a significant impact on our intended goal. So, all right. Are there any additional comments or discussion before we move on to the next item?
No, I just wanted to take a second to thank you very much for all of your insight. We will be taking all of these comments and incorporating it into the final draft for you to look at. Right now, we're scheduled to bring it back to council on the 23rd of August. So we hope to see you then with a plan that you're ready to approve. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. All right, so the next item is New Business Consideration, Item 9A, consideration of adopting a resolution, adopting the amended salary and benefit resolution for the management group for the period July 1 through July 30, 2023.
Good evening, councils, council members. Angie Rodriguez, Human Resource Manager. Before you tonight for consideration is an amendment to the salary and benefit resolution for the management. for the management. The amended provision of the resolution include a two-year term beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2023. There's a cost of living adjustment of 3% for each year, and an optional vacation cash-out provision that allows employees to make an irrevocable election to sell back up to 40 hours of vacation time. This resolution also contains a restoration of two benefits that were eliminated last fiscal year as a cost-saving measure in consideration of revenue losses as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Those benefits include the lifting of a two-year vacation accrual cap that allows employees to have their excess vacation accrual liquidated by monetary payment, and lastly, a deferred compensation dollar-for-dollar match to a maximum of $400 per month. The additional estimated costs for the provisions just described are approximately $275,800 in the first year and $341,900 in the second year. I'd also note at this time, for the record, that the cost of living adjustment also applies to the city manager and the city attorney's employment agreement. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Angie. Any questions for Angie? All right, seeing none. Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment on this item?
No, there are no hands.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion from council? Okay, I'd be willing to entertain a motion for this item.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to adopt Resolution 2021 dash
61.
61, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopting the amended salary and benefit resolution for the management group for the period July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2023.
Second. All right, I have Collins is making the motion, and Rack is seconding it. Any further discussion? All right, Crystal, can you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor McDowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Collins.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Rack.
Yes.
And Mayor Parma-Lilian.
Yes. All right, we'll move to new business, item 9B, consideration of adopting a resolution, adopting the amended salary and benefit resolution for the confidential group for the period July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022.
Okay, that would be me again. So before you tonight is, for consideration is an amendment to the salary and benefit resolution for the confidential group. The proposed changes for the confidential group is very similar to that for the management group. It is a two-year term beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2023, a 3% cost of living adjustment for each year, an optional vacation cash-out provision that allows employees to make an irrevocable election to sell back to the city up to 40 hours of their accumulated vacation. Next slide. And similar to the management group, this resolution also contains a restoration of two benefits that were eliminated last fiscal year. They include the lifting of the two-year vacation accrual cap that allows employees to have their excess vacation accruals liquidated, and lastly, a deferred compensation match, dollar-for-dollar match up to $225 per month. The additional estimated costs for these provisions are approximately $65,400 for the first fiscal year and $73,900 for the second year. And I'm available for any questions you may have.
All right. Does anyone have any questions on this item? Crystal, are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment?
No, there are no hands.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, Crystal, could you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2021 dash
62.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, adopting the amended salary and benefit resolution for the confidential group for the period July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2023.
I'll second that.
So moved by Rack, seconded by Councilmember Dugan. Any further discussion? All right, Crystal, can you please call the roll?
Cake. Councilmember Dugan.
Yes.
Councilmember Rack.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McDowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Collins.
Yes.
And Mayor Parma-Lilian.
Yes. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you for that, Angie. So we'll move on to item 10, agenda setting. There is nothing listed on the agenda tonight for future discussion. Are there any items councilmembers wish to bring up for future consideration? All right, so with that, we'll move to adjourn, but before I do, I wanted to adjourn the meeting this evening in the memory of Bev Buma. Bev Buma started volunteering for the Adult Community Center in 2009, coordinating our health and learning lectures series. She provided 14 lectures a year, and in 2012, planned and coordinated our first elder care resource fair, which became an annual event now sponsored by The Daily Journal. In 2013, we hired Bev to plan and coordinate our trips and tours program. Since that time, she coordinated over 100-day trips and sent over 80 travelers to 12 different countries and all over the United States. She hosted two travel shows per year, and up until 2017, continued to schedule our monthly lecture series. Bev endeared herself to staff and participants alike. She was a true asset and will be dearly missed. So, all right. All right, so
Madam Mayor, I appreciate that tribute.
Thank you, Councilmember Dugan. All right, with that, we will formally adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everybody, for the discussion tonight, and thank you for the community, for your engagement, and staff, for all of your work in preparing for this evening.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.